Does the Carney Board of Aldermen meeting call a meeting order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm sure we've had a chance to take.
I have taken role. Everybody is present and you have a call.
Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, no personal appearances on the agenda, which moves us to our consent agenda. If we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, if there are no questions.
I make a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We have no ordinances on the agenda this evening. We have no resolutions on the agenda this evening. We do have an item under items for review and presentation. The City of Carney proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Sheila Ernst is our city administrator. Go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Let me get the presentation up. So tonight, we're just going to go through the entire budget. Really, I'm going to highlight changes from last year, not necessarily go in every line item. So if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me at any time. And let's get started.
Pardon me, Sheila. Real quick, could you share the screen, please?
Oh, I thought I did, Ryan. Okay, can you see that?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You can? Okay. Let's see. Still good, Ryan? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So there are certain items that affect the entire budget and in each fund. And so instead of talking about them individually through each fund, I'm going to kind of summarize them at the beginning. And then just know that any fund that has employees, insurance premiums, things like that, this applies to any of those funds. So first of all, in this proposed budget, there is a proposal for a three and a half percent cost of living adjustment. That would be effective for all employees April 1st. Also, a one-step merit increase on their anniversary date, on each employee's anniversary date. There are employee benefit premium increases budgeted for workers' comp. And then also, there is a 10% allowance for health, vision, dental insurance premiums, because that always happens in November, and that will be in the middle of our budget year. So we're trying to make sure that we're planning ahead and trying to put some kind of money in there, knowing that oftentimes premiums increase. Also, there are grade market adjustments. This won't actually affect individuals, individual employees' salaries. But what it will do is it will make sure that if we have any employees that are getting close to or topping out, it now makes them eligible for this one-step increase. So it extends the number of years before they would max out, because we don't want employees to feel like they're giving their all and then not be eligible for a step increase. There are in here both new full-time and part-time positions that I will kind of go into as we go through each fund, so you'll know what positions are being proposed. And then we also increase the amount of professional development for all employees. So the, there was a total $1.4 million increase in personnel costs overall. So our total budgeted personnel costs go up to $6.8 million. Salaries and wages were increased 4.9 million. That includes the new positions. Employee benefits, 1.9 million, and professional development, 963,000. We also made a change to property and liability insurance premiums and how they were allocated this year. So first, there was an increase in our premiums, and we have budgeted for an increase in the next fiscal year. But we changed how we're allocating those premiums. So we actually have a list of all of the property that is being insured, the value of the property that is being insured, and what department it belongs to. So what we did is we took that information and we allocated the premiums based on the actual amount of property that is being insured. That is different than had been done in the past. So it reduced the insurance premiums in City Hall, but increased the insurance premiums for park and for water and for sewer. And then if we were, there is a liability insurance premium that is based on us and liability that we could make for the, for the city as employees, as board members. And that was allocated based on salaries. So that's how we did that. If it wasn't properties, property, we then based other premiums that aren't based on an actual property amount, based on salaries, and allocated to each department. And then we did estimate a 20% increase in premiums in the budget to make sure that we had enough to cover any premiums that might occur next year. For our employee benefit assumptions, the employee insurance premiums budgeted a 10% increase. 15% increase was budgeted for workers' comp insurance. And then the loggers contribution, it goes, our loggers premiums that we pay, they are based on, it goes April to March 31st, and we get notified ahead of time. And boy, I wish I could see what is under this. I don't know how to get there, because it tells exactly what our insurance. Let me see if I can trick this. Nope. So our police premiums, they increased 0.6% to 7.8%. Or, I'm sorry, our general increased to 7.8%, so by a little over half of a percent. But our police premiums decreased to 6.7%. And so that is already accounted for inside, inside this budget.
Sheila, I can assume, but I just want to ask, because, so when you're making the assumptions for the 10% allowance for health insurance and the estimated 20% for liability, that's obviously, I would assume, based off of historicals and plus a little bit of a cushion?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are also trying to make sure that we manage it, because sometimes maybe the health insurance would increase 15%. But we're trying to balance the budget, and so maybe the city could maybe pick up 10% or something like that. Of course, when we get into that actual proposal, we're using actuals to dates and trying to do everything that we can to pick up as much as we can, because we don't want employees to be negatively impacted by increased costs, if we can help it. So I know you guys can't see it as well, and I'm really afraid that I'm not going to be able to. I'll try again, but I'm worried that it's going to make it so I can't see something important to share with you. All right. Okay.
If you hit Control and mouse back, will it decrease the slide size a little bit?
Controlling.
There you go.
Hey! Look at that. I love paranoid technology tricks. Okay, so this, we're going to just start with the general fund. We're going to start with overall operating revenues are almost $7.8 million, and operating expenditures are also almost $7.8 million. We do have revenues over expenditures budgeted of $5,000. Now, that's good. We would like it to be more. I think that our operating expenditures are budgeted to where we are trying to budget for worst-case scenario, and at the same time be realistic, though. And our revenues, we are trying to budget for worst-case scenario while also being realistic. So hopefully, at the end of the year, we will end up with a lot more than $5,000 extra. But just being careful and making sure that, we don't want to have to come back to the board in the middle of the year and tell you guys that you have to cut expenses where you weren't planning on it and completely blow up something that was in our plan, working towards your priorities. We are trying to do our best job to make sure that we're going to be able to afford all of this. We're also planning on using $473,000 out of fund balance, which is prior savings from prior years to fund capital outlay. And then we have a projected end-of-year fund balance in the general fund of $1.5 million or 18.9% of operating expenditures. And you can see that our, you know, our biggest budget in the general fund is the police department. It makes sense. People are not calling and, or, police is one of the most important functions that a city provides, public safety. And so it makes sense. And then you can see that the City Hall budget is about 22%. The City Hall budget is really what is housing all the administrative costs to support all of the other funds. So that budget is actually allocated to all those departments. Okay, but now. Okay, looking at revenues, so our general, general fund revenues are projected at $7.8 million. That's $1.4 million more than last year. Our taxes are up 9.3%. That is due to investment in this current year, or in 2022, that affect this current year of new investments. So new houses that were added to our tax rolls, new businesses. Arby's was reconstructed, we had Starbucks. And so then charges for services are up 56.6%. And inter-fund transfers are up 7.6%, and that is really due to sales and use tax transfers. And those are really the differences. Do you guys have any questions about revenues? And then I just want to touch on the administrative service fee charged. So the general fund, really City Hall and the Public Works budget, those are administrative departments. They're not necess, they're all serving internal customers. So you have payroll, you have legal expenses, you have financial accounting and auditing, and all of those are housed in City Hall, and then in Public Works is the personnel that are serving really mostly our water, wastewater, and street departments. However, there are times when Donnie will do some work for the park or the police department. And so somehow, they are touching and supporting all of the departments and funds that are providing actual services. Instead of hiring an accountant for the sewer department and an accountant for the police department, we're able to hire this, this small amount of staff and share the resources so that it's more cost-effective. And so these amounts are charged to each, each department through formulas, and you can see the amounts of that each fund. Water and sewer are really paying the most. That is because they also have utility billing. So we have the Becky and Shirley, they are doing work for all of the different funds, citywide, but the majority of their time is serving the water and the sewer department. And then you can kind of see how that, this is allocated. The formula was done based on revenues. And so if you guys think of like a QuickTrip, and how QuickTrip has a convenience store, but then they have a headquarters in Oklahoma, where all their administrative costs are being done at their headquarters for all these convenience stores. The headquarters isn't producing any revenues, so in order to pay for those administrative costs, the C-stores are transferring money back to pay for those services that they're getting from the headquarters. And that's how this is working. Does that make sense? Does anyone have questions? Should I go faster? Am I going, am I going enough? So this is the City Hall budget. It's $1.7 billion. And this department provides the administrative services, so public communications, financial reporting, accounts payable, payroll records management, IT, legal services to all city departments, and utility billing. The differences in this budget are, there are two additional, two new positions that are proposed. An executive administrative assistant slash deputy city clerk, that is one of the positions. And the other position is an IT technician. So right now, we are outsourcing IT. It ends up making us have, we're, we're doing a lot of time waiting for a response from our outside IT consultant, which makes staff very inefficient. And so one of the top priorities of staff this year was asking, please, can we hire an in-house IT person that is here and can service us when we need it, instead of us having to get in line and, and wait for somebody to have time to reach back out to us? Sometimes we don't even hear from our IT service provider for several hours.
So would that be, excuse me, would that replace our vendor citywide, in which would increase the cost for similar? I mean, that would be a service that'd be allocated throughout the different departments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Also, another change, this year's budget has something new that hasn't been, been in any previous budgets, and it's memberships due to Kansas City Area Development Council. It's very wise to be partnering and getting opportunities from KCADC in order to look for opportunities to invite more development into our community. Also is capital asset depreciation software. It's not a huge amount, but there, that is a new cost that wasn't in previous year budgets. In previous years, depreciation was done in an Excel spreadsheet. And depreciation, there is software that will do that very cost-effectively and print all your reports that you need. And, and then you don't have an issue where assets have been left off or duplicated, because you have, instead of doing it in Excel, you have a software that is designed to do that. Also included in here are litigation legal fees and then racks and shelving for the server room. So that, those are the differences of the City Hall budget. And the next department is called non-departmental. That's kind of funny. And it really accounts for transfers of general fund revenue to special revenue funds. So there's not a change, but it's very significant. Every year, the general fund transfers about half a million dollars to the park fund. And the general fund is funding our parks and rec department mostly. And then this year, we actually are proposing a transfer to the cemetery fund. That money was actually already being spent in the City Hall budget, but instead, we're proposing putting all the cemetery expenses in one place, in the cemetery fund, instead of commingling them in the general fund, so we can see how much the cemetery is truly costing us. And so we're, we're just transferring that money into the cemetery fund. And then we're using general fund money to make debt service payments and transferring to other funds to make those debt service payments. Our municipal court, there, the, I mean, there is a small amount of increase, 2.9%. That is really due to the things that we talked about at the beginning. The cost, the cost of living increase for the employee, the, the increased benefits, and just some inflationary costs.
But none of that was increased of the judge, for the rec?
Yes. No increase in the, the amount that we're paying the judge. And then in the community development budget, the, the big changes, there, there really aren't really changes here. There are three employees in there, there are some inflationary costs, but not any new positions or anything like that. Economic development, this is the money that we give to the Carney Chamber of Commerce, $20,000 every year. There's not a change from last year. And then the firehouse center, so there is a little change. We just realigned and moved costs, so there were some funds that were always budgeted in the park department's budget for Oktoberfest and Magical Night. Those are not included in the park department. Instead, we moved them here so that we can see the true amount of money that we are donating, or not donating, I'm sorry, that we are providing to the, to the Carney Enrichment Council. And so we, you know, it's $134,000 each year.
So I want to make it clear that this proposed budget, there's no intended changes, no intended decreases to what we've done to the past for the firehouse or any of the programs or events?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's the same. It wasn't increased either. It was the same.
Okay.
In the, here's the historic museum budget, $12,000. It went down $4,000. That's because of the Smithsonian. We increased it in last year's budget for the special exhibit that we are lucky enough to have visiting our community in May, right? And, and so we increased it last year so that Jerry could do some advertising and also... Just advertising or were you doing some?
Things associated with the displacements of the...
Right, so, so in next year's budget, it just is going back to where, where it has been in previous years. And the police department, so we are proposing a full-time patrol officer position, and then two part-time employees, one a janitor maintenance person, and then also a property room officer background investigator. And then also included in this proposed budget, different from last year, ballistic shields, helmets, and trauma kits, a small indoor capable drone, screens and inverters for the pilots' vehicles, so the drone pilots' vehicles. And then there are building and parking lot maintenance costs included in this budget. In the public works budget, there are two additional positions proposed in this budget. A public works director position and then an engineering technician position. The engineering technician isn't, doesn't actually have anything to do with engineering. What it does is they're more of a construction inspector. So they would go out and they would be inspecting infrastructure that developers are building, that then the city is going to take over maintenance of that infrastructure. And before the city takes over the maintenance and care of that infrastructure, this engineering tech will be watching all the way through the process to make sure that they are matching and, and living up to the standards, the quality standards that we have in place and are requiring, so that we are not taking a new infrastructure that we have to turn around and start maintaining right away, but can take care of it like when we should, instead of accepting junk, basically. And then there's some reclassification of services and supplies from other departments and funds. So for example, in last year's budget, I don't think that we took, we only did salaries and benefits. What we forgot to do is we forgot to move, Donnie has a vehicle. And so we forgot to, like, move the vehicle expenses and the fuel and the insurance from wherever it was being housed and into this fund that should be taken care of and all of the support costs for the, the public works, administrative costs, if that makes sense. So there's not really a change, but we did reclassify it from someplace else. The solid waste budget, there is a residential trash contractual increase that is built in here. And we also, currently, we have a part-time employee that is housed in the street fund. And we moved that part-time employee from the street fund into the solid waste budget. And the reason is, is because we shouldn't be using street money. We should be using general fund money to pay that. And really, our fees that we're charging customers should be covering all of the recycling and trash costs, if that makes sense. But this gives us a clear, a clear picture of how much it's actually costing the city to provide that service to citizens, if that makes sense. And then you can see it right there, 100, or 882,000 dollars a year. And the reason for that increase, part of it is just a reclassification, realigning that part-time employee out of the street department's budget and into this budget. And then we come to the last department in the, in the general fund budget, and this has to do with capital outlay. And so all this capital outlay is not being funded from current year revenues. It's all being funded from fund balance in prior years. And we're, we have budgeted in there economic development capital planning consultant, $80,000. This, some of this money will be used for an update to the future land use map, which is definitely needed around the land that is around our, the new interchange and along I-35, and, and possibly in other places, too. Then there is $15,000 in there for a possible payroll upgrade that was requested by, by, by the way, Kathy is sick with COVID tonight, so that's why she's not here. Yeah, it's, I think it's springtime right now. I've heard a lot of people getting sick, so. She wanted to be here, but this, this was a request. They're not super happy with the EK, and so looking at possibly, making sure the options are open to, to possibly change payroll providers. Then, of course, the innovation, the contingency, the contingency for, for innovation, $30,000. That's the contract that we, the city has entered into, and so that is budgeted. In the police department, we have budgeted some mobile radio, motorola, mobile radios, court stacking modules, computer equipment, dash camera upgrades, office flooring, and two patrol vehicles. Oh, and then community development is, has requested $40,000 for new permit license, licensing software. There's $30,000 in there for a consultant study. We're thinking that what will happen with that money is that it will be going to the building code update. And then $50,000 for a new inspection. And then $50,000 for a new inspection truck. Okay, and then we have some little funds, and I kind of grouped them together. So we have the DWI drug fund, $55 budgeted there. It's receiving reimbursements from individuals that get convicted of DWIs for expenses related to their arrest. And then it can only be used to fund DWI drug enforcement costs. It's restricted revenue. And then we have the use tax fund. There's $1.8 million in there. It obviously receives the use tax receipts. And it's funding the salary and benefits for two patrol officers and one animal control code enforcement officer through a transfer to the general fund. It's also paying that service on the pickleball and skate park project. And it's funding park improvements and new sidewalk and trail construction. Then we have the sales tax fund. There's $2.2 million of budget allocated to that fund. This fund receives the 1% unrestricted general sales tax receipts. And it is being used to fund that service on the Clear Creek pedestrian bridge and the 92 highway sidewalk. And so the balance of that is transferred to the general fund to help fund costs from the land fund. Our park development fee budget, $77,000 is budgeted in this fund for this year. And what it's being used, or what it's funding, is the debt service on the Lyons Park renovation. And then, and I did want to point out that the permit fees that are generated by the park development fee fund, they're not sufficient. So general fund is transferring money in to help cover that debt service payment.
Is there any money in there for Hallport?
Not in this. There is in a construction fund later in the budget, but not in this specific fund. Then the cemetery fund, we have $31,000 budgeted in the cemetery fund. There is a proposed new position in the cemetery fund for a part-time cemetery sexton. Right now, the street department has been performing those services. And street fund money is restricted money and is supposed to be used for transportation system. And so this budget is proposing that we hire somebody that is specifically able to use money, really from the general fund, because we are making a transfer from the general fund for a new employee that is part-time, that will handle those services. And then the police training fund, there's $5,000 budgeted from that. We did increase police training this year. Any money in the police training fund? It can only be used for training for post-certified police officers. And so we're transferring $5,000 to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for some of the police training for post-certified officers. Then we have the park fund. So the park fund is fairly balanced, but it is. There's $371 of revenues over expenditures in operating revenues and expenditures. And then there's capital outlay that is proposed, not from those current year revenues, but from prior year fund balance savings. And so the projected end-of-year fund balance savings is $22,000. And so I think it's really important for you guys to see that our revenues, park fund revenues, are projected to decrease by $13,000 this year. The reason is twofold. First, our cable TV franchise taxes are down 27%. Obviously, people are doing more streaming. And so it's continuing to erode every year our cable franchise tax revenues. And then we also lost a billboard in a storm last spring. And so while we are getting some billboard lease revenue, our overall revenue is 23.7%. State law will not allow us, once it went down, they won't let us put it back up. We're allowed to maintain billboards, but once they come down, we're not allowed to replace it. And so that has impacted our revenues. There is a proposed increase to recreation fees of 38.8%. And that is not just because of increasing the increased fees, but also because we anticipate enrollment and participation to be increased as well. But there is a... And did the park board already?
They did. And they approved it at the last meeting.
So the park board has already approved some increases in fees.
Sheila, while we're here, I would like for us to go ahead and request to the state to replace that billboard so that it'd be on record so that if that law ever changes, it shows that, hey, it was there, and we might be able to put it back.
Okay.
If that's, that way it's documented that, hey, we're not trying to put on a new billboard. We're trying to replace the old one that was there.
Sure.
You guys don't mind, I mean...
And then the operating expenditures, we have added a part-time park laborer position all year round. The street department has been doing a lot of work for the park department. The street department is about ready to, is going to have a lot more work with the opening of the new interchange. The city entered into an agreement with MODOC to take over right-of-way maintenance of all the state routes and the new interchange. And so we're having to reorganize things, and the street department is going to need to be spending, it's going to take them a lot more time now that they're taking on those duties, if that makes sense. And so to help the park department out, we're adding a part-time park laborer. And then they also were affected mainly because of the new pickleball complex and skate park. That's one of the reasons their property and liability insurance increased so much. Included in this budget is also for free community concerts. And because we are adding this park laborer, we are going to reduce contract mowing. And we know we can do a better job in-house for less money.
And we've currently got the equipment to be able to take on the new mowing?
We have our mowers. And then a few years ago, we got the Batwing mower to mow the large spaces. What Sheila doesn't have up there is still our two seasonal employees. And with the addition of getting the part-time park laborer that we can space out throughout the year, that'll help us out a lot in the spring and in the fall when the grass really starts growing.
And we've had two seasonal, part-time seasonal. That's not a change, which is why that's not called out on here. Okay. And then let's go to the park capital outlays. So $15,000 is budgeted for the Mac Porter Park concession stand roof replacement. There's $20,000 budgeted for a field drag machine for the ball fields. And then $12,000 for two new soccer balls. And then this is the transportation sales tax fund budget. Operating revenues are $1.9 million. Operating expenditures are almost 1.6. So that gives us about $300,000 of revenues over expenditures. Really, it would be ideal if we could get that revenues over expenditure amount to be at least $500,000, if not $1 million. This is the only place where we are generating money to go in and do street preservation as far as milling and overlaying our streets. And so we really need about $1 million each year to be able to keep up with that. And there are some good things. The state, the Missouri gas fuel tax, the gas sales tax increase, we're going to get one more increase coming up. But that has helped us a little bit. Also, we receive money, our road district receives money and the city receives money from Clay County due to a settlement that happened in 2012. And as our assessed valuation grows, we continue to increase the revenues that can go towards this. And so, well, $307,000 sounds like a lot to me in my head. In the city's budget, especially for streets, it's not enough, and we're going to continue trying to increase that. There are also $974,000 of capital outlay. $307,000 of that $974,000 is from current revenues. But then the rest is from our fund balance in the street fund. And the projected end-of-year fund balance in the street fund is $104,491. So transportation fund revenues, $1.9 million. That's an increase of about $96,000 because the Missouri motor vehicle fuel tax increased 5 cents a gallon. And then the Clay County Bourbon Bridge tax increased. So we get 14 cents for every $100 of assessed valuation. And then our transportation fund operating expenses, so I wanted to call out the operational differences. So we're going to be taking on additional responsibility for that state of state right-of-way maintenance. In order to help with that, we reclassified the cemetery maintenance that was being done by these employees. Now their time can be now spent on the right-of-way maintenance. They were also doing a lot of park trail maintenance that will be handled with our new part-time, the help of our new part-time employee that will be year-round. And then recycling center operations. We did add one full-time street laborer. We added a seasonal street laborer, so just a few hours. We couldn't, we wanted to fund a second position, but we couldn't. So we made a seasonal street laborer work. And then we're going to start a sidewalk grinding program to eliminate trip hazards. It's very, it will be more cost-effective, and it will get the job done so that our liability is reduced and that citizens aren't tripping or injuring themselves on sidewalks. And then we will be advertising if somebody really wants their sidewalk replaced. Instead, we will allow them to use the sidewalk replacement grant program so that they're cost-sharing. And then for our transportation capital outlay, there is $7,000 budgeted for a hydraulic pickup room attachment, $65,000 for a compact excavator, $11,000 for a zero-turn mower, $250,000 for a big dump truck with attachments. That includes all of the attachments for plowing and...
Cell tanks for brine treatment also on that.
A 15-foot flex wing mower for those ditches along the state routes. $75,000 for a tractor, $390,000 for street mill and overlay, $26,000 to start a savings account, to start saving money towards when we have to replace a bridge. So we're not actually planning on spending that $26,000. We're planning on taking it, setting it aside, continue adding to it so that when the time comes, we have the money there to use for that project. And then $125,000, that was in last year's budget, that's being carried over to this year for the stormwater program. I don't know, should I go faster, slower? Yes, faster. Okay. So the capital improvement sales tax fund, we're budgeting $1.2 million. And that is making principal and interest payments on Watson Drive. And we're also using that to help fund the Silhouette Drive stormwater project. Then the water and sewer revenue fund, this is the combined fund that we separated our system last year in the budget. But we are taking money that was left over in that fund, and we are using that to fund water line replacement and some sanitary sewer lining. And then the meter deposit fund, there should not be any revenues or expenses. This is really just a balance sheet, but I need it in there because I have to show you comparative years by state law. I have to have the last two years, or the last three years, including the current year and then the year we're budgeting for. So you'll see that for a little bit. The water capital improvements, it's used to account for meter set fees. And we moved, $280,000 has been budgeted there for the South Clark water line replacement. That money was coming from that combined water and sewer fund. And then we have the sewer capital improvement fund. $361,000 is being budgeted for $60,000 to complete the sewer system master plan that was in last year's budget, and $260,000 for the sanitary sewer lining, and $41,000 to pay principal and interest payments on debt that was used to fund the motory fan press de-watering system. Then we have the water construction fund. This is where we are budgeting for the water tower that we have submitted the permit to DNR, and we are waiting for DNR to approve it. That's the delay and what we're waiting for to get that project bid and started. And then we have $500,000 budgeted in the 33 Highway Construction Fund. This is where we're funding the engineering design costs for the intersection improvements at State Route 33 and 19th Street. And also looking at improvements at State Route 33 and Meadowbrook Drive. And then as well as improvements to Nation Road between 19th Street and State Route 92. And hopefully, spending this money will help us be successful in getting grants to help fund some of these costs. And then we have this street construction fund. $15,000 is being budgeted in there, and it's paying debt service. Or it was paying debt service, and we're proposing using $15,000 for new banners and for the street lights. The water and sewer sinking fund, nothing, and it's closed. But again, I have to show you for comparison purposes, same with water and sewer reserve fund and same with water and sewer depreciation. Okay. And then I want to talk a little bit about water and sewer rates. So there is a proposed, the budget includes an increase to water and sewer rates. It is, the reason that we need this is to comply with new environmental EPA standards and DNR standards, cover increased operating expenses, replace equipment, and improve system maintenance. So you can see there's a proposal to increase, and we're going to have a public hearing at the next meeting before you guys would adopt this budget. But $2.22 for an additional $2.22 for each 1,000 gallons of water over 2,000 gallons. So if somebody is using 2,000 gallons or less, they would not see any increase. And then $2.27 on sewer rates. Again, no increase on the first two thousand gallons. I feel like this is the exact same slide. So, I did want to point out that Carney is one of the most affordable communities in the Kansas City area for water and sewer utility rates. You can see here's where we are currently. This blue, this first blue bar. And even with the proposed rate increase, Carney's rates will still be less than many of our neighbors. And so, we're trying to do everything that we can to keep rates as affordable as, as we can. And comply with all the things that, that we need to comply with. So, the average Carney household uses three thousand gallons, three thousand gallons of water each month. Under that proposed rate schedule, the average residential combined water and sewer bill will increase four dollars and forty-nine cents a month. Households that use two thousand gallons of water or less won't increase at all. And the eight dollar per month senior discount amount will remain unchanged. And then I just want to show you that our operating in the water fund, our operating revenues are three point seven million dollars. Our operating expenditures are almost three point six. That is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of revenues over expenditures. And again, that is where all of the money comes from to fund our capital improvements that are needed on the infrastructure and the water fund. And so, that really needs to be well over a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And we'll continue trying to make that happen, but this is where we are right now. There is five hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars of capital outlay in this proposed budget. The projected end of year fund balance savings is only thirty-six dollars. So, our expenses, this is, it, it, it's almost a little bit misleading. So, our operating expenses are three point six million dollars. They decreased from the prior year of four point five million dollars. The reason for that is because in last year's budget, we had the, a transfer of that debt service proceeds to fund that water tower. And so, I have it in this current year's budget that we're in right now, not in next year's budget. So, it makes it look like expenses went down. There are operational differences proposed in this water fund for next year. And it is operating the treatment plant sixteen hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Right now, we do not do that. But that's, we're proposing adding two full-time water labors, one in the treat, water treatment plant. That would help us do this because it is more cost-effective. And then it will also, the, the full-time water labor in the field would help with the lead copper rule compliance. If they would start, we would be able to start a proactive valve maintenance program and a proactive hydrant flushing program. And then the water capital outlay, eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for the lead copper rule inventory. Seventy thousand dollars for ground storage tank caulking. Census software upgrade, fifteen thousand dollars. But that is really not the actual software cost. That is training to be able to use the software. Because our fee is not going to, we're already paying a fee. The fee that we're paying is not going to increase. Also, a seventy-two inch mower, a Vermeer VAC trailer at a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Automated, automatic security gate at the water plant. Two trucks, turbid meters.
Turbidity meters.
Turbidity meters, hydrant meter with backflow, a high-service pump replacement, backup power generator for our water wells, and repainting the clarifier. And then we come to the sewer fund. We have two point nine million dollars of projected operating revenues and two point eight million dollars of operating expenditures. And we're proposing eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars of capital outlay, all from operations. There is a projected year-end fund balance of eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight. And again, that ninety-six thousand dollars needs to be well over that amount. So, there are operational differences proposed in the sewer budget. And we are proposing a proactive maintenance program that will reduce and prevent sanitary sewer system inflow and infiltration by doing proactive manhole inspections and doing a proactive flow check program. And then also going through and making sure that all of our manholes are accessible. That we're proposing two full-time sewer labors that will work in the field to help this happen. And we'll be doing more proactive instead of reactive maintenance. And then for the sewer capital outlay, manhole replacement and rehab, a central air conditioner heat unit for the sewer treatment plant and a truck. And then those are really our big ones, so these last ones should be easier. These are all our construction fund budgets though, so here's where all the projects are. This is where one point two million dollars for park construction includes a million dollars for Hall Park. And then two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for poor-in-place playground surfacing at Lions Park. Then stormwater projects, one point three million dollars. And all of that is anticipated to be the cost of replacing that fifty-four inch stormwater culvert in the Shadow Brooks subdivision. There is one point three million dollars budgeted in the sidewalk trail construction fund. That is use tax money that is being transferred into here for engineering and also construction costs for that Route Thirty-three connector trail. And that's one point one million dollars. Also, engineering costs for the pathways project. We are hoping to be able to fund, use federal grant funds, hopefully, with these engineering costs to be able to help leverage the money that we're getting to finish filling in the gaps that were promised to voters when they passed and approved active stacks. And then engineering and design costs for the downtown street skate project is also included. And we're hoping also to possibly get a federal grant to help us with those costs. Building improvement, so this is a random fund, two point five million dollars. And this is where we're going to put the debt issuance costs or proceeds in order to do structural repairs and the outside of the historical museum. And then also make ADA updates, building security enhancements, and, and add-on for an exclusive meeting round for. Then we have eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in this general obligation. It's making principal and interest payments on debt. Also, the five thirty-five Nineteenth Street Geo Bond, one point seven million dollars to make principal and require principal and interest payments on debt. There's forty-four dollars budgeted for the inmate security fund. And that money is restricted and can only be used for fingerprinting, biometric identification costs. Then we have Kate, the K nine fund, eighteen thousand dollars. This is where we put the donations and grants that have been received by the city for the K nine program. And then we have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in this wireless capital improvement fund. It's making principal and interest on debt. The ARPA Act Fund, basically, we have, we have accounted for and, and budgeted all of the funds from our ARPA. But because we haven't spent it all yet and interest rates are so high, we earned an additional fifty-seven thousand dollars that we can use to, use, to help fund those projects. So, and then the Shops TIV Fund is budgeting receipts in, receipts out of one point two nine dollars. And then I just wanted to point out that we were able to figure out a way to allocate our resources to fund lots of things. But there are plenty of things that were requested that were not able to be funded. And I think it's important to note that the city still has lots of needs. And, and, and we weren't able to do all of the things that staff said that they would need to do their job in the perfect way. So, there were three point eight million dollars of requests that were requested but not funded. A little over half a million dollars was personnel costs. So, there was an additional street laborer that we tried to have more than a three and a half percent COLA. We tried to do an actual four percent COLA for all employees. And then we also looked at increasing the loggers benefit from an L seven plan to L six plan. And we're not able to do that this year's budget. And then there were three point two million dollars of non-personnel related costs. A hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, a hundred thousand dollars in the park fund, three hundred thousand in the transportation fund, one point two million dollars in the water fund, and one and a half million dollars in the sewer fund. And then, let's see. And then I just kind of want to talk about current year revenues. So, sales tax growth was really projected very flat in this year's budget. There is the new three percent adult-use marijuana sales tax. That's a new revenue source. Interest income is projected higher because that is just the reality of where we are today. There are recreation program fee increases, the water and sewer rate increases, the general fund administrative fees. As those costs increase, then the amount that is being transferred has to increase also since those funds are reimbursing the general fund for that. And then cable and telephone franchise taxes to decrease. PSP will get rid of landlines as cell phone companies get smarter and smarter and say your, your, the bulk of your rates that you're paying every month are for data, not for cell service. That continues to erode our revenues. And there are additional revenue opportunities in this next year. I have sent park sales tax. That would all, however, go towards, towards the recreation center and pool. Building permit fees, we are going to be taking a good look at building permit fees and making sure that we ask you, we, we explain these are the costs that this needs, we need to be recovering. Citizens necessarily should not be supplementing costs that developers and new citizens paying, paying for that. And so, also license fees, we're gonna be taking a good look at that. And there are most likely, just because of the times that we live in, going to be future water and sewer rate increases. So, I don't even know how long that took me. Hey, that was barely an hour. I feel like you did a really good job. So, do you guys have any questions?
Only question I have, and I've actually received a question from a resident too, is there's a lot of new positions in the proposed budget. And some of them are adding of existing positions, but there's quite a few new positions that we've never had in the city before. I think you did a good job in your cover letter and the presentation tonight explaining the need and purpose. But for me, and I don't want to speak for the entire board, but I think it would be helpful for the board to see if there's completed job descriptions for the new positions that we've not had yet.
Yes.
And kind of what that would look like on a updated detailed organization chart.
Yes, I can get those for you. I'll, I will email them out this week.
Great.
I have a question and it might be dumb, but if we're taking over state right-of-way maintenance, are we getting any funding for that or we're just doing this all?
No, Jerry, so when, I think you and Dan were the only two aldermen that were on the board at this time. But when you guys many years ago approved interchange agreement with MoDOT, part of their revenue share agreement to the city at that time was when you guys approved that agreement, they're part of them, they're, part of the reason that they provided matching funding was we would then, once it's built, maintain not only the right-of-way there, but all the state right-of-way entering and exiting our community. So, it's kind of our, our swap, kind of, you'll give us money for this project, but we're gonna start maintaining all the right-aways.
See, I remember about a thing, and it could be selective memory, but I don't remember about doing all of it.
Yeah, and that, that, I reviewed that agreement as of recent.
I think it's road surface, it's more tied to cleanup, mowing on the sides and things like that, storm sewer, not asphalt.
Shelley Daniels can speak to it better, but it's, the sidewalks are maintained by the city now on MoDOT property. The storm sewers are maintained by Carney now. And then to MoDOT standards, maintaining right-ways, like David said, the mowing and, and trash pickup and all that on all the state ride.
Which, which I know our staff can do better than MoDOT standards because I've not been satisfied with their maintaining as of recent.
However, Mayor, the contract only requires that we maintain it to MoDOT standards. I hear that you would like us to do more though.
I'm glad that that's not chuck holes and puddles.
Yes.
Yeah, not roadway.
I'm sure we all have been dealing with a lot of inquiries.
I think you guys are all struggling to stay awake after that.
You're bored.
I try, I'm sorry. It's very exciting to me.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I'll say is I've, I've been involved with the budget process with Sheila and department heads. I met with them individually, I met with Sheila. I, I know that each department head had to make some tough decisions. And it's not always a fun and easy process, but I appreciate everybody's time and work up to this point. We continue to be one of the safest cities in the state. Chief, that's by no accident. And I'm glad we continue to do our best to fully fund our police department. We, we do a lot of things that are priority, our water, street, sewer. Donnie, I know there's a lot more equipment you guys need, you need a lot more positions, but we'll, you know, we've, we've been adding a lot of positions the last couple of years. We've been improving our infrastructure, adding equipment, trying to do our best to put forth a, a budget tool that we can use to do the best we can to serve our citizens. So, I appreciate everybody's work so far. And with that, are there any other questions to Sheila on her presentation this evening? Thank you. Next item is mayor's communications. Briefly, I've not had a chance to return the call of presiding commissioner Nolte. I'm just getting back and tell myself from vacation, but, but I, I have a big phone tag with him. What I believe, and not, like I said, I don't want to speak for him because, because to his defense, I've not had a, a formal conversation. But what I believe the commissioner is, is looking to see is if the city of Carney would be interested in possibly cost-sharing on a plan to expand Ninety-two Highway to four lanes. That's been a talk for the last several years. My initial response would be to the commissioner that we have other priorities inside of the city limits. We talked about a lot of them this evening, Nation Road, Thirty-three and Meadow Brook, that I would probably suggest that the board spend time and resources on now. Not stating that future long-range planning is not important, but I would think that that's where Mark and other federal funding could possibly come into play. So, before I do return the presiding commissioner's call back to have a discussion, I just wanted to get a brief consensus on the board. If you guys are in, in line generally with my thinking, last I was aware was a, a study in Clay County's portion would be what we would look at the cost share, but expanding Ninety-two Highway, Fort Lane. share, but expanding Ninety-Two Highway, Fort Lanes, from Richmond, Missouri to Kansas. So, uh, I, I don't know what that cost estimate is, and I said I haven't talked to him, but I, I would think that we'd have other priorities inside the city limits right now to spend our time and resources on.
Several million dollars.
Yeah, I would, I would guess the plan for Clay County loan would probably be a couple million dollars.
At least, yeah.
I would love to be a good neighbor, but there are so many things within our own community that we don't have the budget for, that to take what money we do have, I don't think this year or even next year, it's an option.
Uh, Commissioner Nolte and I serve on the Mark Board together. Um, I'm the board alternate to the mayors, to the Transportation Committee. I think we've got a lot of representation for Clay County at Mark, specifically the committees for transportation that we could, we could probably be good advocates, and that's what I'll, I'll spend my time on there. Great, thanks. Didn't want to speak for the board without having a quick conversation, so I appreciate that. Uh, no other mayor's communications. Uh, we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Only that the next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, uh, because of President's Day, February twentieth.
Okay, we'll move on to alderman discussion, Alderman Barker.
Um, and in hearing that we're going to look at hiring, um, quite a few people in this next year, I was wondering, does the city have a hiring policy?
We do not have a formal hiring policy.
Okay. I would kind of like to see something developed, um, that would include giving preference to residents over non-residents, all things being equal. Obviously, we want the, we want the, the best and the brightest, but when we can hire locally, that would be my preference.
Anyone else? Alderman Lehman?
We just wanted to say, uh, this, this last couple of weeks has been hard on our community. We've lost multiple, um, big-name residents, um, and, uh, longtime residents. So, um, you know, the city of Carney has, has definitely had a rough couple of weeks. The other thing is, is I would like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, we proceed with reviewing the, um, Dangerous Dog Ordinance. I know there's multiple cities out there that, um, that have dangerous dog ordinances that are, uh, that are stronger than ours. And so, uh, along with that, I'd like to see the, uh, like to make a motion that we bring the pit bull, uh, ban back up, um, the first meeting in March. Uh, so if we could have staff work on that and bring that back up in, in March.
One second. Mr. Counselor, just an item of clarification. Under alderman discussion, i- is it proper for an alderman to put a motion on the table any time during the alderman discussion? Is that proper?
That's, I can, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, I was.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, just wanted to make sure, yeah.
If he has the floor and is giving his commentary, would be appropriate for him to introduce a motion to the body.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, there's a motion on the table by Alderman Lehman, and I just want to make sure I understand to have, uh, the first meeting in March, to have the staff, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
To present a revised Dangerous Dog Ordinance and to, uh, bring forward the Pit Bull, um,
I would amend the motion to, um, only talk about the Dangerous Dog Ordinance at this time. And, and until that is in place, I don't think I would feel comfortable in talking about the Pit Bulls, so.
So I, I wanted to make sure though that, I, I, I think what I hear Alderman Lehman stating is, he wants to present a modified ordinance, but I don't think we've given staff direction on what he wants modified, and I'm hearing you say you want to talk about a modified ordinance before we would consider amending anything. So I, I, I just want to, does that make sense to do? I guess I'm confused. I want to make sure that we're giving staff the clear direction on what we want done here.
Well, I guess my thought behind it was, you know, we did the, the Polco survey, and the residents, uh, of that survey had several, uh, strengthenings of, I guess, for lack of a better word, to the, to the Dangerous Dog Ordinance, um, as part of the repealing of the Pit Bull ban. So that was why I was proposing both of those at the same time, so that we could incorporate the additions to the Dangerous Dog Ordinance and, and the Pit Bull, uh, ordinance, the Pit Bull, repealing the Pit Bull ban as part of what Polco survey. So kind of Dangerous Dog Ordinance first and then Pit Bull ban, uh, same night.
I understand, but for your, for your motion purposes, I just want to make sure that staff is clear on what you're wanting changed for us to consider.
I think that's an open-ended question, because I think there are ordinances out there that we can look at. I know Liberty's got a, a good, uh, Dangerous Dog Ordinance. I don't know. David, do you know when our Dangerous Dog Ordinance was written?
Uh, I don't know the exact year, but it's been around for a long time.
Long time, yeah. I think it's, I think it's time that we look at that, um, you know, to update it and, and possibly bring in those, uh, those additions that were talked about in the Polco survey.
So you put a motion on the floor, uh, to discuss the Dangerous Dog Ordinance and the Pit Bull Ordinance to vote. Alderman Barker modified that motion to have a discussion on the Pit Bull, I'm sorry, the Dangerous Dog Ordinance only. So, and, Mr. Counselor, just a point of clarification, because this is new for me. We have a first, we have a modified first, so then I would still need a second, is that correct?
You would.
Okay. We have a first on the table, modified first. Do we have a second?
I would do a second on just.
The modified.
Modifying the dangerous dogs for that particular meeting.
To have a discussion. Okay. So we have a first, modified first, and a modified second to have a discussion at our next regular board meeting, which will be February twentieth. Is that correct? Am I wrong?
Actually, I was talking about March.
Okay.
First meeting in March.
Okay.
March fourth, something like that.
March fourth, yes. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Staff, are you clear that the board's director, director visitor?
Uh, I think so.
Sorry.
First meeting in March, on March fourth, we staff will be presenting the revised Dangerous Dog Ordinance. That includes items that were selected by residents in the Polco survey and presented to the board for the board's discussion.
Correct. And thank you for, I was not trying to make that difficult. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing things correctly and putting things forward correctly. So thank you so much for that. Alderman Holt?
I don't have anything. I've been on vacation.
Alderman Spencer?
I don't have anything either at the moment. I am glad, though, that Punks Tony Phil did not see his shadow.
He's not always been reliable, but I hope, I hope so he is this time.
Excuse me. Uh, we do have an executive session notice, a closed session per RSMO six-ten-oh-two-one subsection one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in six-ten-oh-two-one subsection thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. And just a reminder, our public section of our meeting will be adjourned from there. So this does conclude our public portion of the meeting. If we can consider motion to enter into executive session at seven fifty-one P.M.
Making motion.
All set.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
All right, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.